Regarding the fiscal year 2017 budget review. This evening on the agenda, we have, we'll have a presentation on revenue from Mayor De Natale, followed by the following departments' budget. Airport, Community Development, Information Technology, and Purchasing. That said, I'll hand this over to Mayor De Natale to discuss city revenue.
Thank you, Mr. President. The general fund revenue consists of four major components: taxation, state aid, local receipts, and other sources. Taxation revenue is expected to increase by approximately 1.7 million, 1.2 million from the Prop 2 and 1/2 increase. 500,000 in new growth in real and personal property as per the assessors' assessment. This is an area, ladies and gentlemen, and councilors, that I would, that we're focusing on as an administration to certainly improve next year, and we think we can succeed at that. State aid breaks down into three categories: the Mass School Building Authority reimbursement, that will decrease by 143,259, and that's due to receiving the final payment on a renovation project to the Long Joe School. City continues to receive reimbursements related to the new high school of 1.9 million for three more years. Education aid, and again, this is based on the governor's budget with overall increase of 1.5 million, and as we all know, that the governor proposes and the legislature disposes. So it is now in the hands of the Senate, and that number usually changes, so let's hope that it's going to change in a northerly direction. General aid, based on the governor's budget, will increase with an increase of 350,000. The net difference between the governor's budget and House budget is 48,887. Once the final state budget is passed, and I might remind the councilors that that can go as far as a conference committee, which goes well beyond the, usually the July 1st timeframe, and if any, will either be covered through adjustments to other revenue accounts or budget adjustments. Local receipts, an overall increase of $700,000 based on trends and/or recent estimates as follows. Motor vehicle excise, an increase of 280,000 to 3.4 million. Room tax, and this is certainly substantial, an increase of 50,000 to 660,000. Trash charges and royalties, an increase of 350,000 to 1.95 million. And Medicaid reimbursements with an increase of 50,000 to 650,000. Other sources, a net increase of 30,000 based on the recent calculation of city-related charges and in consideration of services provided by the enterprise funds to the city. And that completes the general revenue narrative for this year, and I would like to inform the council that we're hoping, we're working very, very hard toward increasing these numbers next year. As I've continued to say, I say public whenever I get the opportunity, our way to improve the city of Fitchburg is through growth, increased revenue, which will in turn help everyone's standard of living in our city. So we're focused on that, we're driven by it, and we're driving in that direction.
Questions by councilors? Seeing none, we'll, Councilor De Natale.
Is this on the entire page?
The whole revenue? Are the questions open up for the whole revenue discussion or just the first page?
Just what the mayor presented.
In relation to Page 4 and 5? Okay. I have stated before, and I'll state it again, my grave concern about the use of overlay surplus money, and I've already had a discussion with the mayor on this, and I've been saying this for the last eight years. Hopefully, this administration will impose some type of new policy where we wean ourselves off of this dependency. The state Mass DOR labels overlay surplus funds as free cash, and what that is, is we put aside tax abatement money every year, we always overshoot what the abatements are going to be, and then that money we don't use goes into the surplus fund. And then the Board of the Assessors every year relinquishes some of those funds, 700,000, to the city to be used for any lawful municipal purpose which the DOR has deemed free cash. I have said it since 2008, I'll continue to say it until I start to see this number go down to zero, that we should not be using this to balance a budget. So as far as I'm concerned, this budget is out of balance by a minimum of $700,000 because what I envision happening in this city down the road is, the city gets itself off of this dependency so that the mayor now and in the future can take this $700,000 and pave roads with it, demolish more buildings, not to use it to pay for salaries. Now, when you couple that with the snow and ice and health insurance, that's where I get this discussion about structurally unbalanced budgets. I have some residents call me recently, ask me, can you please explain what that is? I'll put it in layman's terms. If you make 10 bucks a year through your salary and your expenses are 12 bucks, what the city is doing is it's dipping into its reserve account every year for $2, doesn't have the money to pay for what it's doing. So the city got smart in FY14 by reducing it to zero, that available funds line below it. There's a reason why that available funds line and the overlay surplus are together. They both are the same kind of money. But the city's policy going back decades is, well, that money's always there, so it's recurring revenue. Well, free cash is always there too, why don't we use that? That's recurring. We don't use it because it's fluid, it goes up or down, whereas this is stable. Just because it's stable doesn't mean we should use it to pay for salaries. So I hope that this new administration gets smarter with this account where the others have failed, and I will continue to press for that, and that's what I mean by structurally unbalanced. This budget is legally balanced on paper, but structural-wise, our revenues that we take in outside of overlay surplus is not enough to meet our expenses. So if we didn't have this 700K in here, we'd have a $700,000 deficit. We have to keep raiding overlay surplus to cover our expenses instead of using that for anything else we want. So we need to get off of using that number. And my only other concern about revenues is the 1.2 million in new taxation through property taxes. This isn't a fault of the current administration, this is a fault of 35 years of mismanagement. All of the new revenues that people pay every year through their tax bill is going to subsidize employee benefits, 100%. It's all it's doing. So when I have people call me up on the phone and say, my taxes went up X amount of dollars, how come I'm not seeing extra services? Very simple, because every year, our employee benefits goes up over $1 million. The pension alone is going up 600,000 a year, in perpetuity for the next 20 years, because we poorly funded it when we started doing pensions. So we have to make up the difference. So every year, this current administration is going to face a $1 million increase in health insurance and pensions in perpetuity, and that's what people's tax raises are going to. Not for more police, not for more fire, or anything like that. It's going to subsidize employee benefits that they don't get a direct benefit from, which is why I always harp on new hires, affording what you already do, and it's repetitive, but I'm hoping this message sinks in, this go-around going forward, that I am very concerned about the pension account and the health insurance account. So that's the reality we face, and the mayor's right, we need more growth, and I encourage to see some movement in that area. I am not asking this administration to get off $700,000 entirely, that's impossible. But what I'm asking for is what we did on the line below that. We used to use almost a million bucks of free cash every year for balancing the budget. We went from a million to 750, and then it went down to 240, so next year, I'd like to see this overlay account say 600,000, and then 5, and then 4. Get us off of it. And, you know, the excuse that, well, it's recurring, that's a poor excuse, because free cash through the budget is recurring too. That doesn't mean we use it. So I hope the city follows the DOR's recommendation, because they are 100% correct in this regard. Thank you.
Council Joseph.
I guess I just want to follow up something similar. I mean, we are always in that get it and spend it mentality, okay? And we said, well, it was said back two years ago when the great Wolf's came in and we were going to get additional revenue, that that revenue would be earmarked for things like OPEB and things like that. Well, that revenue's gone up $400,000, and it's just got eaten into the budget, okay? So we had, there were supposedly plans that were going to be made for that money, and so far, we took 20,000 and we put it into Johnny Appleseed Fund or something and said, okay, now we've reinvested it, maybe it'll get us some more. But it's just, it goes back to the times when I hear, when we used to have the incinerator going, and the incinerator was going and making us money hand over fist, but we never put a dollar back into the incinerator until it burnt out and it was no longer a cash cow, okay? But all the years that it was going, we never reinvested in our wastewater system, we just used that money to continue to spend on the budget. And now we have, we had the opportunity, we're getting, you know, I'd say a half a million dollars, but I think that that's a conservative number, that's $660,000. We have additional revenues, and we just right into the black hole and put it into, you know, health benefits and all those other things to balance our budget. I just don't know when we're going to get smarter on not spending every penny that we have and either taking it back through the tax levy or some other way, because we've all said the ceiling is coming and all of those other things, but we got another $400,000 in revenue and it just disappeared within a year. So I just don't get why we do that.
Commissioner Council. Council Joseph.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mrs. Saracen a question. So the overlay surplus, I know that, that since I've been on the council, that seems to come up every year. So my assumption is that when the Mass DOR comes in and does, they look at our books and this and that, have they ever had any concerns or complaints about that, or is that a practice that they don't want us to do? I know at one time, you and I talked, you said typically you put 1%, I think, of the budget, you kind of allocate it for that, and you only use, I think, 250,000 or 300,000.
The assessors actually declare the amount, and they are allowed, typically, they'll apply 2%, and that does, 2% of the levy, which is 47.5 million, is around the 950,000. You know, I mean, in theory, the, I agree with the counselor and DOR that it is nonrecurring. In practice, because the assessors typically will abate about 250 to 300,000 of that 950, it does free up that 650 to 700,000 a year. And so it is, you know, it is available. I mean, one way to mitigate or to make the change, I think it's either you do it one way or you do it another way. Another way would be to reduce the 950 to 300,000, but, and then you'd have that money to spend right away. If anything, this is more conservative, because it delays the spending of those funds for a couple of years.
Thank you. You know, and just, just to agree with the other councilors, I mean, I know that it seems every year, we have residents come up to us, and when it's time to set the tax rate, and they say, you know, you raised our taxes while, I mean, this is the time of the year when we really raise the taxes. Benefits go up, things go up, insurance goes up. It's not that we're raising taxes, I think we're just trying to stay afloat a lot of years. And I agree with Council Joseph, there's, a lot of times, we have extra revenues, and they're used to basically fund things that we wouldn't be able to fund through regular taxation. But it's one of those things, I think, that, you know, we have to look at somewhere along the line of, when we're getting these revenues in, they just can't all be going out the door to one line, so, and really, that's what it comes down to when you're looking at the numbers. So thank you.
Council De Natale.
At last night's Finance Committee meeting, when we used available funds for demolition, there was another number on that page, and that was remaining free cash, I think it was about $225,000 is what's left in there. And there were two items under that number that said possible appropriations, and both of them were stabilization and OPEB. I would strongly encourage this administration, if they're going to use that 225, that half of it go into STAB and half of it go into OPEB. We set up that OPEB trust for a reason, and I'm concerned that the previous administration threw us a bone with the 250 to get some of us off her back, and I don't want that to continue. I'd like there to be a stable number we put in there every year. So I'm hoping, because I didn't see it in the FY17 package, no money towards STAB, no money towards OPEB, I'm assuming there's a reason for that. I'm hoping I'm right, that some of the free cash we have available right now will be going into those accounts, and whatever we get certified through the FY16 budget, some of that also goes in those accounts. OPEB more than stabilization. We have $128 million unfunded liability, and we have $250,000 set aside for it. Peanuts. Thank you.
Any further questions from councilors regarding revenue? Seeing none, we'll move into the budget hearings, beginning with the airport on Page 44 and 45. Mr. Ellis and members of the Airport Commission.
Good evening, sir. Boy, do I miss these meetings. But anyway, Mr. Mayor, Council President, members of the council, City Clerk Farrell, Attorney Pusiteri, and Dick Saracen. My name is Jack Naylor, for the record. I'm the chairman of the Airport Commission, and just to let you know that we're here tonight based on a budget that I think will help out with the airport this year and in 2017 as we move on. Everybody knows that the airport in itself is going through some growing pains, and sometimes you hear things or whatever, but I think, and I believe, that once everything is completed and everything is done, you as members of the community and our community will be very proud of what we have at the airport. So with us tonight is Scott Ellis, he's the manager. We have the Administrative Assistant, Debbie Silva. We have a couple of the commissioners, Peter Kettle and Rich Libertori, so they're here. If there's any questions that you may have that you do not get answered, you can be assured that I or Scott will get back to you, but if you're going to have any questions, Scott is the guy to ask the questions to. So thank you very much for allowing us to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Naylor. We'll begin with Personal Services for a subtotal, excuse me, Personal Services for a subtotal of $225,118. Questions regarding Personal Services? Council De Natale.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'll wait till expenses. Thank you.
Any further questions for Personal Services? Seeing none, we'll move to, no, Council Boishman.
I don't know if this would fall underneath Personal Services. Mr. Ellis, I always wondered if you can, I was on the council for 2013, 2014, and you came in front of the council for appropriation, you get a grant from, not a grant, a bond from Mass DOT for approximately $4 million. How much do we have to pay back?
5%.
5%, which is what, about 250,000, better?
Yes.
Now, just recently, we got approached for easement rights, and we had to get the rights to clear up, so the airplane's going to land down, we had to buy the property. Do we have to pay back that government, the government, the money back to the government?
For, there's, the easement project is three phases. The first phase is funded at 97.5%, and we're responsible for the other 2.5%. For Phase 2 and Phase 3, it's funded at 95%, and then we're responsible for the other five.
So my final question is, have we ever had branded deficit down the airport as long as you've been on?
The airport will sometimes, one year run a deficit and the other year, you know, run a credit. We try to break even as often as possible. One thing that I'd like to point out, that sometimes even when it shows a deficit, it's not really a deficit. I have fiscal year 2014 in front of me, and it shows we finished in debt $76,277, but we actually had $96,000 worth of fuel on hand that we had purchased. So that deficit really isn't, really isn't a deficit.
Well, I thought, the way the council talked, and the way I heard people talk, we used to carry the big jets in there, and we lost the big, whatever kind of jet that was, used to come in, they went somewhere else, and they were paying big money.
Yes.
So how did we make up that deficit that we lost?
That, that deficit resulted, I mean, losing the jets resulted in a decrease in jet fuel sales, but it also resulted in us purchasing less jet fuel. So we lose a little bit of revenue, but we also lose a little bit of expenses. The plan to get those jets back into the airport starts with the Navigation Easement Program. The vegetative obstructions caused the FAA to say, it's not safe to land jets in instrument flight rules at night, so we're shutting your night approaches off, your instrument approaches. The jets can still land during the day, but when they see a restriction, they said, no, 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 we're not going to go there, we're going to go to Hanscom, or we're going to go to Worcester, or we're going to go to Nashua. So the first step in getting that revenue back is to complete the Navigation Easement Program. Once we complete the Navigation Easement Program, there's no longer a safety issue, and then we go back to the FAA and kickstart the new runway project. Get the runway extended from 4,500 to 5,000 feet, and that will also help getting the jets back. Another thing that's going to help increase the revenue is the new terminal building. We've got a lot of, a lot of good things going on at the airport, and in a few years, that's going to be a sight to behold, but it's going to be like going to the dentist. Everybody likes having a pretty smile, but, you know, you've got to get the Novocain first, and that's what we're going through right now.
All right, for now.
Council Trance, pertaining to Personal Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen. Out of curiosity, on the clothing allowance, in the last four years, we've appropriated $1,300. This year went up by $600. The mayor is appropriating $1,900 next year. What changed?
There was a change in the union contract for the administrative assistant, who now qualifies for a clothing allowance.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Joseph.
Well, that depends on how you mean by fully staffed.
Positions that you have here, are they staffed?
20 years ago, we had four full-time linesmen, two part-time linesmen, a manager, an assistant manager, and administrative assistant. Now, we have two full-time linesmen, two part-time linesmen, and a manager and an administrative assistant. So we've lost three full-time personnel and several part-time personnel. We're currently staffed at the level that we can afford, but it's my opinion that you've got to spend some money to make some money, and if I could, I would like to bring another full-timer onboard, if I can figure out how to pay for it. It's, right now, we've got enough to do the bare minimum.
So are these positions that you have here staffed?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Is there a contractual obligation to overtime?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Do we, does in the language of somebody's contract say that they have to have two hours of overtime every Saturday, because it's part of their contract or anything like that? Okay. I'd just, I'd like to recommend that we cut the overtime budget by $3,750.
I think that would be an extraordinarily difficult thing for the airport to take with the staffing that we have right now. If I have one full-time linesman go down sick, that's half of my full-time staff. The reason the overtime, the overtime budget for last year was exceeded, because we had two people get sick at the same time, and we had, I had one full-timer who was doing the job of three people. If you cut the overtime budget, it's really going to handcuff me in my ability to serve my customers.
I just think in this municipal world that we live in, people are living off of overtime, okay? And people are, people are expecting overtime, because we're giving it like it's candy, okay? That we just give out overtime, we give it out in the dispatches, we give it out at the air, we give it out here. And I just say, it's time to reel it in and live within your means, and if you're fully staffed, and you have all of these people that you have on a daily basis, that you've got to stop using so much overtime.
It's fully staffed for a normal day, it's not fully staffed for a snowstorm. I have 42 acres of pavement that I have to plow every time the snow falls, and if that happens on the weekend, I got to use overtime.
Or close down the airport until Monday?
Or close down the airport until Monday, which is unacceptable.
Okay. Council Boishman.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I've been down to your airport three times, see you on different things. Can you tell me what the administrative assistant does?
It would be easier for me to tell you what she doesn't, though. She is involved in every aspect of that airport. She, she helps with scheduling, preparing the warrants, paying the bills, answering phone calls, taking complaints. She does more as an assistant manager than she does as an administrative assistant.
Well, my question is to you, I've been down there three times. Where's her office? If I'm a customer...
Counselor, please restrict your question.
It is the budget, sir.
Specifically to the line item and the amount of the budget.
I can answer, I can answer that question if you like.
Because I'm thinking about cutting that position, because I never saw her.
Sir, her office used to be right next to my office on the second floor of the administrative building, right? We voluntarily vacated that space to make room for the flight school, because the flight school was getting kicked out of the hangar that they were in, which is rented by someone else.
Right, I understand that.
So my, so the office, the three of us, the full-time linesmen, the operations position, her office and my office got squeezed down into a 10 by 10-foot square foot space, basically 100 square feet, okay? And for a long time, she was in that space. There just wasn't enough room. It's a closet. Her office was moved, her desk was moved, from the administrative building over to the office in the SRE building, or the snow removal equipment, our maintenance building. That's what she works out of right now. This was on the recommendation of the Human Resources Director, because of the space constraints and the noise constraints of working in that small building. When we move into the new terminal building, which will be August 1st, everybody's going to be in the same building. Operations, my desk, her desk, and they're going to be easily accessible.
What, me as a customer, I'm just flying into your airport, and you're going out, how would I know where to go to find her?
There's a phone on the wall next to the operations desk with a sign that says, "For help, pick up the phone, press the button," and...
Well, I didn't see it the day I was in there.
It's there. I can show it to you, if you'd like to come down.
I'd like to cut $51,261.
Council Tran.
Mr. President, in our, in your overtime account line item, in 2015, you spent over $7,000, over $7,700. 2016, we appropriated $7,500, and you exceeded almost by $3,000. And you're asking for $7,500 for next year, and then may appropriate $7,500, and I think it's in line of what you've spent in the last two years. I don't think that's the right overtime line item to be cutting. We've had other line items in the overtime in other accounts that exceeded beyond what they spent in the last many fiscal years, and we didn't make any cuts. So I do disagree with making any cuts, any reductions to your overtime line item. Thank you.
Council.
I, go ahead.
You had something to add?
I was just going to say that, last year, when Scott was out for a period of time, I was asked to be the temporary manager of the airport, and I was there every day. And what I saw was the administrative assistant doing an excellent job, doing the bills, answering the phone, actually helping out with other avenues that the airport has that needs to run. When Scott came back, I...
When Scott came back, obviously, I went back to see how things were going and a lot of times, because of, we're down, as Scott mentioned, he will go out at times and help out, cutting the grass or being out, you know, doing things that a lineman would do. But two linemen cannot do it all at that airport. It's a large, well, it's a small airport, but it's large to get everything done there. So, I would have to say that what the airport has right now is adequate for what we have today. What may happen in the future when the airport is expanded with the runways and we get more traffic in there, which we're all hoping for and I'm sure everybody here is too, because it brings in some revenue to the city and it gives a purpose for that airport that everybody, you know, can, you know, say, "Hey, this is great that we have at least an airport in our city and that's constructive." I think that by cutting that position would be wrong at any time. So, I just wanted to put my say in, knowing what I know. I have gone down there too. You're right, I've gone down there and, you know, you have, you know, and we have discussed this too with the phone. When you walk in from the outside, pilots have to be a little bit smart. I mean, you don't fly planes because you're missing a peg here or two. The phone is right there, it tells you what to do. You call up and Debbie will answer the phone or somebody will answer the phone if she's on another line or things like that. So, that's the way HRD wanted it right now, but as Scott said, once the airport building is constructed, August 1st or a little bit after that, everybody will be setting into the new building. Thank you.
Mayor Gina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to remind the counselors that there is a great deal of activity at this airport now. This airport, for reasons that I'm not going to go into because I don't want to prolong the process here, but has been neglected. It is no longer neglected. This will be a real, a facility that we can be proud of. If anything, I'm hoping at some point, will increase the revenue coming into the city, into the airport itself, much greater interest that we're going to attract in that airport. If anything, I hope we can have an opportunity that the manager is speaking about with increasing employees. Yeah, if we can bring in the revenue and we can justify that, absolutely. But, you know, to take a look at some of these positions now, I think is premature. There are things happening at the airport, you know, the easements issue, we're going to be opening it up to night flights, runway extensions, review of leases that the city solicitor has done an outstanding job on, the new administration building, a lot of things happening down there. We've got airport condos that are in and new ones being proposed. There's a lot of activity there. I would hope we would be very, very cautious when looking at cutting any positions at this present time. We're always looking at ways to be more cost-effective. I agree with that, but right now, there's much happening there and I'd like to keep things with a certain degree of stability in them. Thank you.
Counsel Green.
Hi, gentlemen. I would like to know if there's a plan, I guess Mayor Gina Tally did do a good job at saying that the, with the expansion, with everything happening at the airport, does that include new, the ability to have more renters come into that space?
Yes.
Okay. And who are the majority of the users of the airport right now?
Right now, the airport, because we're not getting the jet traffic, it's mostly general aviation. Our two single biggest purchases of fuel are a charter organization operation called Skyline Flight and the Flight School. The condominium trust, the 57 T-hangers, are privately owned on that airport. They purchase about 40% of the fuel. It's almost all general aviation, which is the single-engine aircraft, the small twins, twin-engine aircraft, that sort of thing. Previously, when we had approaches, when we had the night approaches, we were getting probably four or five jets in there a week and they would purchase several hundred gallons of jet fuel at a plot. We've lost that. We've lost that. That's, our aviation fuel sales are up, are higher than I projected, but our jet fuel sales are way down as a result of the problems we have with the approaches. But again, that there's a plan to get that fixed.
Great.
If I may just say, a couple of years ago, I don't know the exact year, 2011, Debbie would know this too, but she did a study on it, and I believe somewhere in the 70% range, it was commercial traffic. It was commercial traffic coming in to the airport to go to Target, to go to the other big box stores and things like that. So, once we get that back, we'll be having those small jets back, the small twin props and things like that, that will help out with the airport and the revenue. So, right now, obviously, as Scott mentioned, we're down a little bit, obviously, because of what's happening down there and with the night flights and things like that, but I think once we get going down there, you'll see an increase in traffic and revenue.
I'll give you a perfect example of the kind of traffic that we used to have there when UTS was buying Wachusett Potato Chip. They would fly into Fitchburg to examine the plant and have meetings on such a regular basis. They were actually keeping their, a car in the parking lot. They would land, get in the car, go to the meeting, come back and take off. That's the convenience of Fitchburg Airport for commercial activity. Hanscom Airport's too expensive. Worcester Airport is too far away from the highway. Fitchburg Airport is right at the intersection of two major highways. The jets can land, get in the car, go to their meeting, come back and be in the air 15 minutes after they get back on the airport. That's really what we're hoping to advertise with the new terminal building and the longer runway.
Right, that's all, that's all good news because I think the more you can market it, not only to the consumers that you had in the past, but new consumers that would use these services, I think the better. Thank you.
I'll just remind counselors, we're still on personal services line. That said, Counsel Beazel.
Thank you. Personal services. So, when I'm looking at the job, all these jobs that are listed here, they all have job descriptions. So, if any counselor wanted to go down and find out what person's job description was, that could be made available to them.
Absolutely, sir. Actually, I would welcome a visit from any counselor that wants to come down and ask me any questions. I'm usually there from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Gina Tally.
I was with Counsel Tran about the overtime. The overtime budget is adequately funded and the airport's in a different situation where they may be fully staffed, but this overtime is specifically for if someone's actually out and not to, not to, there's no excess there. There's no data to support that there's excess there. The administrative position suggestion that it be cut, we could spend days going over positions that should be cut, that no one ever breathes a whiff about, and we're going to lay our sword down, some of us anyway, or one of us, on this position. If for no other reason than because he went there three times and didn't see her. Well, she's busy. Maybe she had to go do something. I don't think we should be basing our personnel decisions on you going there once or twice in a given month and not seeing someone there. So, because I've gone there many times and I see her all the time. Sometimes I say to myself, "I see her too much. She's going here, she's going there, she's everywhere." So, I mean, if that's the basis we're going to use for positions, boy, people better be nailed to their seats. So, I don't think, what bothers me about this, and I guess I'm guilty now because I'm prolonging the discussion, is we just wasted 30 minutes of valuable time having to have these two gentlemen explain why the position's necessary because someone didn't see them there a few times. Thank you.
Counsel Boishman.
Tell you what, Mr. Ellis. Tell me what she does. Tell me what the position does. You sent me a letter, you know, not here, not here today, send the counselor a letter saying, like, if I was working in a machine shop, I have to...
It's a union position, it's a union position and there's a job description.
Mr. Ellis.
Mr. Ellis, water please.
Water, please. Counselor, I'm sure Mr. Ellis would be happy to go through what the position entails at an appropriate time. Right now, we're talking about salaries. You proposed a cut, but beyond that, we, you know, the point of the budget discussion is not to justify, you know, the duties and responsibilities of each position. If we did, we'd be here for months. This is simply, you know, can we justify the cost or not? At this point, you recommended a cut. If you have something new to add, I'd be happy to allow you to continue to speak. If you have nothing new, I would encourage you to work with Mr. Ellis after and in between now and Tuesday evening before we vote on the final budget to make sure all of your questions are answered. Is that unreasonable?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions regarding airport personal services? Seeing none, we'll move to airport expenses with a subtotal of $518,307. Counsel Tran.
Mr. President, gentlemen, I'm, under the line item, repair maintenance building, I'm curious to know why, first of all, we appropriated $22,863 last year and this year, we still have over $18,000 not used. Is there a reason why we still have that much money outstanding? Because as you can see, that raises, it's likely for people to make reductions to that line item.
Well, those numbers are based on what we would normally spend. The airport is kind of a harsh environment. We get winds down there, you know, 30 to 40 knots on a regular basis. When we have a very harsh winter, we'll spend a lot of money maintaining the buildings. When we have a less harsh winter, we spend less. I base my line item, the amount that I budget for each item on history, usually a three-year or a five-year history. And that's why the numbers are what they are. If we spend less than that, then that's great, but I'd rather spend less than spend more than I put in a line item.
So, for next year's budget, 2017 fiscal year, it's been reduced to $15,000. Is that sufficient?
Based on what we've done the last couple of years, yes. A lot of that is maintaining an old building that we're getting rid of. I don't expect to have to do a lot of furnace repairs on a brand-new terminal building. So, I expected to spend less than we normally do.
One more line item, the clothing under expenses. What's the difference with that and the clothing allowance under personnel?
That line expense is basically for uniforms. We get new uniforms, the uniforms get, you spill gas on them, they get greasy, they need to be replaced. We pay for half of that. Our fuel supplier, which in this case is Shell Eastern Aviation Fuels, pays for the other half. The clothing allowance in personal services are for things like pants, boots, normal clothing that the linespeople and the staff have to buy and experience normal wear in there.
Thank you.
Counsel Beazel.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, we have a new terminal building opening up and, you know, I'm sure it's going to be absolutely beautiful, but, so I was a little surprised under advertising and marketing. We don't have, nothing was requested or nothing on that line at all. Is there a plan in place to let the world know that we have this beautiful new facility and everyone's welcome to come to the airport, same thing as, you know, once the easements are done? How are we going to go about as a city, advertising this to the world that we have this now?
I have been working with other people from the city, from, and with the airport commission on that. We didn't have anything planned for 2017 because we didn't know when the terminal building was going to be finished.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Gina Tally.
Thank you. Counsel Beazel, if I can address the counselor, Mr. President. Thank you. This is also, marketing and advertising takes place through the Department of Transportation. We're one of, how many airports are there? Municipal airports?
There's 39 public-use airports in Massachusetts.
Okay. The marketing and publications, a lot of that comes from, at the state level.
Okay.
So, I do agree with you. We have to take a look at maybe enhancing that locally a little bit stronger, if we will. So, we can look at that. I appreciate you pointing that out.
Thank you.
Counsel Gina Tally.
What's difficult about the airport budget is, I noticed too, that there are a lot of accounts here that we originally budget and they don't even come close to being used, but there's a reason for that. This budget is entirely dependent upon what they earn in revenue. If they're budgeted $1 million, that budget is based on them expecting $1 million of revenue. So, for example, in FY '16, the current year, their total expense budget was $962,000. That's also what their revenues were budgeted at. But their spending is projected to be $650,000 and their revenues are projected to be $650,000. They're actually pretty much in line by $3,000 through the middle of May. So, if they're not taking in that level of revenue, they cannot spend that level of expenses. So, what they have to do outside of personal services, personal services is a guaranteed expenditure, so they have to raise enough revenue to cover that. But the expense line items, it's so difficult to make a cut in these line items because it fluctuates every year. It's entirely dependent on oil sales, fuel costs, the whole nine yards. So, what the airport has to do, is compelled to do, is they have to cut their expenses by almost $300,000 because their revenues are not robust as they thought that they were going to be. And that is why things like, this account jumped out at me, the airport improvements. The budget was $150,000 contingent on the revenue they were going to receive. Because they're not getting that much revenue, they're only going to probably spend a fifth of that. So, they have to make adjustments each month on the fly. I don't envy that department because they don't know what they're going to spend really every year. It's a flip of the coin, it's all based on revenue. So, every month, they've got to retool their expenses based on what came in and what will come in the next month. So, this budget is always ripe for cuts on face value because of how far off the expenditures are from the plan, but that's not, that's intentional because they have to keep within their revenues. So, if their revenues aren't robust, neither will their expenses be. So, those are the adjustments that you see here, which is why I haven't made any recommendations for cuts, because to do so in the airport budget is gambling because we don't, we never know what it's going to be. You never can tell. Their revenues are mostly based on market forces beyond their control. Thank you.
Any further questions regarding airport expenses? Seeing none, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I just would like to say one other thing, too. Mayor Gina Tally and President Mike Kuzmerikis, he's also on the airport commission, so if you have any problems with this budget, go see those guys. But anyway...
Thank you, Mr. Naylor.
And one other thing I wanted to say, too, that since, and I know he's going to, you know, that since Attorney Poussetteri and the new administration has come into the airport, we've got a lot of things done, a lot of things on the table, but here's one gentleman who's worked very hard to get things done that have been let go in the past, for whatever reason. I'm not going to get into that, but he's done an excellent job and I want the counselor to know this, too. And if there's any other questions or whatever, call me up, I'll call him and we'll get the answer to you, but I want to thank you very much. The airport is proud to be in the city, it's proud to go ahead and try to do the best we can for this council, this community, and everybody at large. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Again, I just want to echo what Commissioner Naylor has said. I also failed to mention the importance of the makeup of the commission now. Peter Kettle, Rich Libatore, Richie Raymond, Jack Yu. It's a great group now, we're all working together and as I usually use that old, that euphemism I use, "We're in the canoe, we're rowing in the same direction in the boat" and we're hopefully going to make a difference. And I really do thank Mr. Kettle, he's a great addition to the commission. Appreciate it.
Can I, I'd like to add one more thing. Some questions had come up about the job that... that my linesman and that the staff does. Last year, I had an illness, and I was out for several weeks. And at the same time, one of my linesmen was also hospitalized. So we lost half of our full-time staff. And the full-time linesman, and Deb, were there all the time in our absence, and they did a superb job. And they have my full support.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll move next to Community Development, page 31 and 32. Mr. Cassasa, good evening.
Good evening, good counselors.
We'll begin with Community Development Administration, Personal Services, for a subtotal of $79,256. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to Community Development, Economic Development, Personal Services, subtotal $82,268. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to Economic Development Division Expenses for a subtotal of $17,300. Amy Green. Counselor Green, excuse me.
Thank you. I have one question. The two line items of the promotion and advertising. If you could just let me know what the plan is for either the advertising expense or the promotion expense through this account?
Certainly. If I may first point out, we, although we have not expended much of that budget yet this fiscal year, we have encumbered funds for full expenditure of that as part of the initiative to encourage development on Lower Main Street, which will involve the development of a formal historic district and which will enable the owner of property at Lower Main Street to obtain up to several million dollars in federal and state historic tax credits. So that's part of an economic development initiative that we felt was necessary on behalf of the city. And it was really consistent with the intent of providing the Economic Development Director with a sufficient budget to be able to support initiatives like this that would encourage private investment. As to your specific question about what we might do in the coming year, I would ask our Economic Development Director, who can give you a rundown of the kinds of activities that we might be spending these funds on in the coming year.
Ms. Bohart, good evening.
Good evening, counselors. As Mr. Cassasa explained, sometimes things come up that are time-sensitive enough that sort of a, not so much of a reallocation, but a channeling of some of the marketing and promotions types of monies towards the, in this case, the Morin Square Initiative, was a good idea. But that doesn't mean that marketing and promotions and advertising aren't still core critical to the promotion of the city and all of its assets. So to give you a feeling for the kinds of things in the upcoming fiscal year that those line items will be devoted towards, things such as brochures, either produced in-house or by a graphic designer to promote, whether it's the downtown or some or other districts, some of the other amenities that we have. Wayfinding signage is something that has been contemplated for our gateways. We've spoken a fair bit about gateway appearance and tidiness, but also how people find their way through our community, particularly tourists. Probably one of the most important things, because it will be critical to the ongoing creation of an economic development strategy, is facilitated district-by-district meetings led by me. But it's an outreach into each of our commercial areas with the business leaders with the idea of establishing feedback loops. And that type of, an initiative is not just a one-up. It's going to start a pattern that will then perpetuate. And then also, there's the potential, and this is more under the contracted services line item, which is a smaller line item, there's the potential, we don't know yet, but the potential that we might need some economic consulting to do some analysis beyond what could be done in-house, possibly, as we're refining our economic development strategy. So whether it's district-by-district outreach, whether it is brochures, wayfinding signage, other forms of advertising and promotion, any or all of those are still absolutely urgent and important. It was just that in this particular fiscal year that we're in right now, the Morin Square project and the potential for that historic district designation was extremely worthy of the resources. So there's a little bit of a re-channeling just in the fiscal year that we're in right now.
Right. Thank you. That's encouraging.
Counselor Tran?
I was going to grill you on all three of those line items, contract services, advertising, and promotions. Because in the past four or five years, we haven't spent in a way even near remotely close to what you're asking for, for the next fiscal year. I'm going to proceed with an open mind. I'm anxious to see what you're going to do with these line items going forward for the next year or the next few years. And that's all I have to say. I'm not going to make any reductions to those line items after hearing what you said.
Counselor Joseph?
As I had said during the, when we did the Johnny Appleseed Trail Association, it's the same comment. I mean, we're giving money there when we should be giving money here. The more money we can do in-house to promote ourselves, I think, would also help us. So I know maybe taking, not taking it away from Johnny Appleseed is the right answer, but still, I keep, we can't advocate for increasing the budget. But this is one area that I'd like to see the budget increase to just promote ourselves. And I know that we've got a full-time person that's promoting us, and I just give her the tools to do the job. That's all I'm asking.
Any further questions from counselors regarding Economic Development Division Expenses? Counselor Donnelly?
I just want to kind of respond to Counselor Joseph. I think we have to promote within, but I think we also have to promote without. I think we can't market ourselves just by internal marketing. We have to attract business. And tourism is supposed to be one of the greatest economic engines. And I think we have to use the Johnny Appleseed to do that. Because I don't know of any other venue that's available. Thank you.
Any further questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to Planning Division, Personal Services. Thank you, Mary Jo. We have a subtotal of $86,878. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to Planning Division Expenses for a subtotal of $3,200. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to Community Development Housing and Development Division, Personal Services, for a subtotal of $55,859. Counselor Green?
I do have a question under the Grants Program Manager. $47,000 and change down to zero. So was that, was that a person that you lost in your department?
What happened in that situation is that we had retirement within the department, and that vacancy was filled by a person in the office. We decided that that position, the Grants Program Manager position, given the concerns the mayor expressed about being as tight as we could with the budget, could be, if everyone shipped in, filled in by a part-time person instead of a full-time person. It is fully grant-funded, but it would still have some impact on the city budget in that we'd be eliminating any of the related post-employment benefit requirements for that position.
And then is there, if you can tell me this, is there a direct connection between that position that I assume looks for any and every grant available to the impact of where it says less grants? FY16 was $302,000, and now we're $317,000. So are we going to lose out on any grants by not having that, that position?
Well, we did think long and hard about that and the need to make sure that we have people who are capable of managing the grants that we do come into the office that don't provide any administrative support, like the $3 million River Street Improvement Grant Program, or some of the other grant programs that we've received, the park improvement grants. But we feel that we have experienced staff who can handle that. And with this half-time position, because we don't have any clerical people, if that person can handle the warrant and the payroll and provide support to the rest of the staff, we think we can manage.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gina Tally?
The $55,859 subtotal?
What is that covering? I can never make sense of these planning budgets because of the grants. So I just want to know, what's not funded from the grant in this page, this section? What's that $55,859 paying for?
That would be the amount not funded by the, by the grants.
Right. But my question is what?
A portion of several positions is covered by the city, so that they can carry out activities that are not eligible for reimbursement on the grants.
Is that $24,848 Program Management Assistant covered by the $316,943?
Yes.
Yeah. It refers to 40% of the housing, the director of housing, 30% of the senior project manager, and 20% of the program management assistant?
And 100% of the assistant part-time?
No, 0%.
So that's being paid by the city?
I'm sorry. 100%. Yes, that's.
100. I didn't see 100% here. That's why I'm asking. Okay.
And no city funding in that one.
You have how many, you had how many people before the grants manager retired? How many did you have?
Well, we had an extra, we had one extra half-time person, essentially.
Okay.
We had a full-time position that was turned into a half-time position, or a 19-hour-a-week position.
You went into my next question.
Yeah.
19 hours?
Yeah.
Is it going to stay 19 hours?
That was the intent.
I, every time I ask this question, I get some department heads looking at me like my eyes are crossed. But I just want to reiterate that we've been burned many times before in these part-time jobs. They're sold to us as 19 hours, not going to go over 19, and then a year later, oops, it was 24. They get health pennies now. So I just...
I understand.
I'm gun-shy whenever I see a part-time position in this package.
I just want to verify that that number wasn't random or arbitrary.
No, I know.
It was intentionally created such as to reduce.
Neither were two or three other ones that were asked for last year that then became benefited positions. Not in your area. I'm talking elsewhere in the city. So I'm just a little gun-shy with that, that number. I just, if it's 19, it better stay 19. Thank you.
Counselor Catty?
Larry, a few years ago, in passing, you had spoken to me about a grant, the senior center, and that it wasn't applied for. And then you, I think, helped, and we obtained a grant for $140,000 for the installation of the roof?
Well, that was mostly CDBG funded, but yes, we did get funding through the NASA Star.
So if you're, if you become aware of a grant, or grants, and you don't have the time or ability or staff to apply for those grants, couldn't you contract that out? Aren't there people or services that would assist you with the grant writing?
Well, because grants are very specific to a, address a specific city need, hire a consultant, unless that consultant is intimately aware of what the city's goals and priorities are, would require that we spend an awful lot of time going through the process of first hiring that person to do the job, doing RFPs and going through interviews, and then training that person to go to identify, to provide the necessary information that's city-specific, that our staff already have. So I would say that it probably wouldn't be very cost-effective as a means of doing it. And that's why I try to retain the professional capacity we have in the staff for them, because they can do it very quickly and efficiently. And also, we can have, we have to have an in-house discussion, as well as with the mayor, about, look, there are these grant opportunities out there. Which ones are really worth pursuing? Which ones are actually going to provide more benefit than cost? And then we make that decision, and we assign the appropriate staff person to write the grant application.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
My other question is on the lead program manager. I think I recall that that position was not going, I may be wrong, but I didn't think that that was going to be a city position that we funded. I thought that there was a program that was going to take care of the lead abatement process. That's why we needed this particular person?
What we, let me refresh your memory if I can.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
On that. We had a lengthy discussion about that grant. It's a $3 million grant, and it involves hiring about six different people. Only one of those six is an employee of the city, because that person has to coordinate all those activities and work under the guidance of the department, and has to be physically present with an office. That person was hired and is paid for solely by the grant. And we were able to arrange for reimbursements under the grant program that we feel will fully cover any of the city's obligations for that position.
Because when that program, when we use up all that $3 million, that position will go away?
If there, if there isn't a lead paint program any longer, then that position will be eliminated. And that was meant, made very clear to the person who was hired to do the work.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly?
Thank you. I just, I'm going to reiterate some of these things. I don't know how much outside supervision or how much input council, mayor, has dealing with the Community Development Office. But my observation has to do, if you hire grant writers, and you have people that can get these grants, who makes the decision that the grant is good for the city? If it's always done internally, it can be used as an employment program. So you know, when you get grants, if you spend the money, we get more money next year. And my, I've said it, people know how I feel, that there's so much opportunity that we save. Many years ago, people said that multifamily houses are our tax base. If you look at majority of multifamily houses that we are preserving, they're our tax liability. A single-family home in Pittsburgh, the average home that has one child in school, does not pay for the child. When you have multifamily homes, that you have multiple numbers of children, it's not a tax base, it's a tax liability. So my question to Community Development and the office is, it's good for the person, because you can have an entire 10, 20, 30, 40-year career in that if you're a grant writer, preserving things. But my question is, is it good for the city? And is it only the office that asks the question?
Counselor, can you be specific to a particular line item, just in a spirit of consistency?
It's, I understand, it may be a little out of line, but you don't get an off, we don't get an opportunity to speak to this department, to let everybody know. The question is, is it good for the city? Because my observations for many years is, if some things were done a little bit different, I just think that, you see, all the nonprofits get some kind of grants. And the more grants they get, the bigger the organization gets. And the bigger the organization gets, the more demand there is. I mean, that's the biggest industry I see in the city of Pittsburgh, nonprofits. And if you look at the grants and the grant writers, we, I think someone, starting with the mayor, and then next to the council, is what is good for Pittsburgh, and what direction do we want to go? Thank you.
Anyone further wishing to speak with regards to Housing Development, Personal Services? Seeing none, we'll move to Housing Development Expenses for a subtotal of $0. Any questions? Seeing none, that will conclude Community Development this evening. Mr. Cassasa, thank you for your time.
Thank you. If I may make one comment, just to reassure everyone, that when this office submits a grant, it's the mayor who submits the grant, not this office. The mayor's the one who signs it. The mayor's the one who approves. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Cassasa.
Hey, Larry.
Next up is Information Technology, page 13. Mr. Brini, good evening.
Hello.
13. We'll begin with Information Technology, Personal Services, for a subtotal of $154, $154,407. Excuse me. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to Information Technology Expense for a subtotal of $6,000. Questions from counselors? Questions from counselors? Counsel Green.
The travel and training expense of four thousand dollars, is that, is that new?
No, it was, uh, uh, the last administration had tried to combine the Purchasing Department and IT Department. When they were separated back, um, due to a council's, uh, arguments, uh, that was left in the Purchasing Department, that was just recently transferred back to the IT Department. And, uh, it's always been around four thousand dollars, and it's always been used, and it's, it will be used today, this year, as well.
Okay, for the, the travel and training?
For training, yeah. Um, I've got a training scheduled for Munis, uh, for the IT Department, and I've got a viewpoint training for, uh, the Building Department, the Health Department, and the Fire Department.
Great, thank you.
You got it.
Counsel Gina Tally.
Comment was just made that the travel accounts always used. And FY fifteen, hundred and ninety dollars was used out of four thousand. FY fourteen, twenty-five hundred was budgeted, nothing was used. In twenty thirteen, twenty-five hundred was budgeted, hundred and twenty-one was used, and on and on. Um, FY sixteen, the budget is, uh, four thousand dollars, and we've spent one forty-one. So, obviously, that projection number is bunk, and I would like to make a recommendation that we cut that line item by two thousand, which is gracious considering they barely spend a few hundred. Thank you.
Any further questions from counselors on Technology Expense? Counsel Green.
I guess my follow-up to that would be, um, for the training that you'll be taking then in order to teach the department heads-
Two thousand.
I, I don't know how to use the, the-
Yeah, we've, um-
Permit binder better, or-
Yeah, I'm actually hiring a person from the company to come in and train on this view permit, the, the tablet inspections. Um, we have trained, we will continue to train with, through our department, but, uh, but I want to have, uh, intense training, one-day training for the staff.
And did the, did the quote or the budget come in for that particular cu- person to come in and do it for four thousand dollars?
Um, it is fifteen hundred dollars online and three thousand dollars if he comes, he or she comes in.
And what, what option are you doing? You're having him come to the office?
I, I actually haven't spoken to the mayor yet, that, that was a price I got, uh, two days ago, and I'm trying to schedule a time to get all the inspectors free, and I, I was going to leave it up to the mayor to make that decision. But I'd like to bring the person in, knowing that that money is still there for that reason.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bonilla and I met this week to talk about the fact that view permit in particular is not being utilized by, by the departments that it should be. And, uh, Mr. Bonilla's in total agreement with that. So, where we are, we're working toward bringing all those departments in, the ones that are, that are the stakeholders in this, and starting to utilize it, and let them know that the mayor's office is driving this issue and wants this program to be used. It's just counterintuitive. People are observing things in the field and taking it back to the office and handwriting it down on, on paper, instead of using the tablets. We want that utilized, and we want it to be utilized now. So, that's part of the training, and, uh, we're going to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Counsel Boshman.
Trevor, did I hear you say that you're going to start training on new, Munis, the one we bought last year from last year's, what was your hearing?
Uh, the Munis, uh, uh, requisition-
Yeah.
Module? Yeah, that has been bought, and, uh, I believe our plan is to start implementing that requisition and PO process at the beginning of the next fiscal year. So, at, you know, within a month or so-
In July.
We will start moving forward.
And we're going to train everybody?
Yes, sir.
And then if somebody else has questions, they can get retrained if they don't understand it?
Yeah, that's typically the, the way it goes, it's training and retraining and retraining.
Okay, that's all I want to do, make sure-
Yes, sir.
Uh, Counsel Donnelly.
I just want to concur with what the mayor just said. On May fifth, I got a note in the mail about something that, that was observed on May second. I have a picture that I took at four-thirty in the afternoon from May second, and it was taken care of by fo- five o'clock. But I got the letter on the fifth. So, my question was, you know, with the technology today, do you want to solve the problem today, or is it to generate paper? So, I, I, I think the technology, a phone call, a text, uh, a computer message, to get something instant, that's, can solve the problem, the technology is there, but it's not being used.
We could take a picture and send you an email from the inspection, at the moment they were there.
I took the picture, I stopped, observed it-
Yeah.
Knocked on the door and said, "What is it?" Cleaned up. But I get the letter on the fifth, I wouldn't have get it cleaned up till the sixth, if I-
Yeah. Right.
Counsel Gina Tally.
How long has the technology been in the field, and there hasn't been training?
Uh, that, I never said there hasn't been training.
So, what's this training for?
This is retraining.
Retraining, okay. Um- Well, that was my next question, and, not, not his, not his fault-
That's right.
But, uh, I remember on the Finance Committee a few years ago, we appropriated tens of thousands for new equipment, and they weren't being used. Not Mr. Bonilla's fault. People need to understand, there's stuff we bought that was sitting in a box for months. And, and, and the powers that be at that time told us, "Oh, they're being used." Another, another fairy tale. So, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad we're using them. I'm glad our thirty grand of taxpayer money's put to use, uh, two years after they were procured. Not, again, not, he's got nothing to do with it. He buys the equipment, trains them, they weren't being used. Probably because the, the, the Board of Health ran the Building Department. I was told I was crazy for saying that, even though the state came in and said they were, but, oh, whatever. Thank you.
The, the mayor's tasked me to do everything that we can do, he's got the full, I've got the full backing of the mayor on this one. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna fish or cut bait with these tablets, it's going to happen this year.
Well, I, I've been very critical so far in this budget of the current mayor, but I will say, it's always a breath of fresh air to know that the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh is actually engaged in managing departments. It works wonders with employee morale. Thank you.
I agree.
Any further questions for Technology Expenses? Seeing none, we'll move to Information Technology Services, subtotal three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Counsel Catty.
Last night, the Council on Aging was in here, actually, the library was in here, and then the Council on Aging. And the library on their telephone expenses was zero. The Council on Aging, it was eight hundred dollars. Why, why are they-
I, I can't speak to that. Uh, every, every phone in, every physical phone in the Senior Center and in the library is, in my budget, we are maintaining those phones. It might be a cellphone-
There was an explanation-
Counsel, the explanation was that it was a, a direct access line through March and other third-party providers?
Couldn't, couldn't that be covered with your phones?
Yeah, yeah, this is the first I've heard of it, I will, I'll definitely look into it. Uh, I'll, I'll talk to them about what the use is, and see if I can incorporate that into my system.
It's not a lot of money, but eight hundred dollars could be used-
But it's something unknown.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Counsel Green.
Um, the line item on Computer Supplies and Repairs. FY fifteen was seventeen hundred dollars, this year fifteen thousand, so what, what are we repairing, or what are we replacing for the two and a fifteen thousand dollars?
I'm so sorry, I was trying to write down what he wanted me to do, did, could you ask that question again?
Sure. Under, uh, Computer Supplies and Repairs, uh, previous year seventeen hundred dollars and change, this year fifteen thousand. So, I'm just curious on, are we, what are we repairing, or what are we purchasing for fifteen thousand dollars?
I, I apologize, I don't know where that seventeen sixty-one came from. That's not something that I produced. Uh, I, I, I'm under the impression that I use almost every dime of this budget every year, so I don't know where the numbers- I think the numbers got a little screwed up because of my budget was combined with another department and then ripped back out. I don't believe that number is accurate, and we, we, I, I don't know if we can reference someone else, but-
Is it, is it close, FY fourteen, the numbers that we have are eighty-five hundred. Is that closer to-
Yeah, I, I, typically, um, a- as I've told you guys in the past, I, I run a very lean conservative department until the very end, in case of emergencies, and then I'll replace computers and firewalls and servers as, as I can at the end of the year. So, I'm not sure why that number's like that, I think that it's just because, I really and truly, um, this, I could combine all these accounts into three line items and be much cleaner than, than all of these, because I kind of use them as one account on all those computer supplies. So, maybe I went over on another line item by, by seven thousand dollars and just used that. But, you know, telephone, fixed cost, and really, computer supplies, and internet, I would like to separate, that's about it.
Well, uh, thank you, but to, Mr. Sarason, can you, do you have any further explanation on that? Only because I, we've got nothing to go on, really, if we're looking at what we're provided for that account, or that line item.
Well, these are the amounts that were budgeted, um, projections. Uh, let me just say, as far as combining accounts, we, we could meet with the department, that should be done before the budget goes in.
Right.
So, that would be, uh, you know, to, you want to clearly identify each line item and, and may, where it makes sense, um, put them together, or, or break them out.
Yeah, I've been, I mean, just so you know, back to your original question, I'm replacing copiers and printers with that, that money. Any new equipment that's needed, um, not necessarily PCs, I try to keep those in another line item, but, uh, you know, peripherals, uh, uh, sca- scanners, printers, team, things like that throughout the year. It's typically what I'll, what I'll use that money for.
And, do you have a better sense of what that actual number would be, what you would actually spend on the supplies?
Uh, yeah. One second. Yeah, I mean, I, I can't tell you projection-wise at this point, because I am going to combine that account with, with my computer support, city computers, and my intent is to replace the firewall for the city this year. Um, I would like to, to put money towards a phone system for the Fire Department, that's a priority by, for the end of the year, to try to find some solution for the Fire Department. So, those would be the two major things by the end of the year that I would be using money for. Um, and then PC replacement, we never do enough for PC replacement. We should, at a minimum, be replacing every PC in the environment at, uh, every four years. And we have, uh, two hundred and twenty PCs now that we manage, not clowning, you know, cruisers and everything else, so we don't make that number. So, typically, what I'll do at the end of the year is I'll buy PC replacements for the, all the departments, various departments.
With that money that you have budgeted?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bonilla, I'm going to press you on that a little bit further. I see under Computer Supplies is still, uh, a little over eleven thousand dollars remaining as of the end of April. Does that mean you plan to enc- have you already encumbered those funds for new computers?
No, my intent is, my, my, my plan is to buy as much as I can, um, in the month of June-
Okay.
For that equipment. Um, not necessarily to encumber, I won't have enough money to replace the phone system in Fire, but if I can start buying the components of that system, and then find the money in next year's budget to, to finish that job, much like I did the Police Department last year, or the year before.
And, and then, uh, Public Safety Data, um, taking this as a police, um, uh, police cell phones and-
Uh, police cruisers.
Okay.
Um, the, we opened a new substation, which, uh, we funded that cost.
Did we significantly, uh, s- cut down on our, uh, costs here? I, I just see a remaining balance of eighty-three hundred dollars at the end of, uh, April. Is there a reason why we-
Yeah, the-
Have such a remaining balance?
The only line item that we've actually reduced our costs substantially is the telephone light item. I believe all these accounts will be diminished by the end of this fiscal year. Um, the only one that, that we've really done a lot of work on is the phone line item, and I was hoping to use that money towards the phone system for the Fire Department.
So, what, I guess, I, I understand the computer supplies, you wait till the end of the year, you know, to see what's going to break and, um, malfunction before you, you do system refreshes, um, for, for old equipment, but the Public Safety Data, still have eighty-three hundred dollars remaining. What's the reason why? I, I mean, do we have bills that we're waiting on, or, uh?
No, it's just that there hasn't, the, the, we've, we've paid for the, the replacement, that's, placements that we have now. I've been sitting on that line item towards the end of the year for this phone system for Fire. It's been, uh, line item that I've been asking for, for three or four years, I know it's a critical situation over there. We can't go without phones. So, I've been sitting on that line item as, as tightly as I can for the end of the year, so I can start buying that equipment.
Okay.
And that is directly for Police and Fire.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Gina Tally.
Uh, there, with, what Counsel Green was asking, I noticed this last night, um, with some of these accounts. I have no doubt that IT is moving some money around within their-
Parameters, which is perfectly acceptable, but Mr. Bonilla asked, "Well, I'm not sure where the source of that number is coming from." I'm, I'm looking at all of them right now, they're coming from the city budget reports for FY thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. So, I don't doubt that the money was spent somewhere else in the account. For example, in FY fifteen, the contracted services line item was overrun by twenty K, but the computer supplies and internet access were underrun by fifteen, for a net of negative five. So, the data would suggest there is some movement within accounts. What I would like to press upon, um, everybody is, Counsel Green was reading this correct, the status C does reflect all these numbers on here, and there are some numbers on here, like Public Safety Data Services, that do not reflect that in the status C. In fact, the status C really shows nothing on Public Safety Data Services, except for this fiscal year. So, something's going on with these accounts, or, I don't mean illegally, I'm just saying, in order for the council to better collaborate between this package and what we get in our monthly reports, it would be helpful to know where this money is, is going to, because when I sat down last night and I looked at it, I said, geez, we, we never use the Public Safety Data Account, it's, it's always got eight or nine grand left. So, why are we still budgeting ten? But then I see other accounts that are over, so I, I just, there may need to be more transparency with this, this, this area, because it, it's not jiving with the status C. I have no doubt the money is being spent, but, um, for example, FY fifteen, it says three thirty-six. Uh, the status C actually says three fifty-four.
The numbers are, yeah, I, I-
I don't know where the numbers are coming from.
I don't disagree with you, that this budget's been bounced around quite a bit over the last couple of years, um, integrated into other departments and pulled back out, and it's just, I mean, the history is not very accurate. But what I can tell you is that I am spending this money on other departments and on equipment, um, every year, so-
Well, FY fifteen, you only had nine hundred bucks left, when all was said and done, between Personal Services and Expenses. But there's clearly a disconnect here between what's in our, and, our monthly budget reports and what's reflected on this page. So, that, that might be the reason why there's some here that are confused by the expenditures. Some of these accounts look like you never use them, which I know isn't true, because I know the police have laptops, all this maintenance on those. But, um, my, my only other question is, how many computers a year do you, are you able to procure new computers?
Um, well, I can tell you, this year, we've bought thirty computers, uh, about three months ago, and I believe at the end of last, or the beginning of the, the year, we bought about twenty more.
Okay, so-
So, we're, we're, if I can, if I could buy another fifteen or twenty this year, I'll feel real comfortable about what we've done.
How many computers out of the two twenty are like DEFCON five with replacement here?
(laughing) I, I, I don't, I can't look at it that way, I replace machines by the-
Because of the operating systems, right?
And there was a lot of, there was a lot of pressure to trickle down computers, so-
Yep.
The department head would want the new one, and then trickle it down, and I just don't have the resources to do that. So, I replace them as they're, by age, not by-
But you have to replace them because of the new software, mostly, right? I mean, Windows and these upgrades-
Yeah, and just, just slower, you know, failed hard drives.
So, your, your plan, or your, your goal is to replace anywhere from twenty to thirty a mo- a year, rolling?
I would, I would like to do fifty a year.
Okay, I, okay, and that, what line item is that for, from? That's, that's the city computer support?
Yeah, typically, that is the Support City Computers.
So, I'm try- mathematically, I mean, forty thousand or forty-five thousand, I, I mean, how much is a computer? Isn't it like two thousand or fifteen hundred?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm getting computers for around, with solid-state drives, for around nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred bucks, okay.
I'm not replacing monitors.
Okay.
I only replace monitors as needed.
I'm thinking the whole system.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
We're all going to sort them from you.
Okay.
(laughing) This, I mean, you should see what the school gets, you should see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Train.
I think Trevor answered most of my questions, um, the only thing I have left, Trevor, is, um, are you responsible for the school computers too?
No.
No? And who is?
Um-
In their budget?
Yeah, Bob Jokla, I believe, is the manager over there, and he handles the finances for the School Department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Green.
Um, going back to the Computer Supplies and Repairs, for the fifteen thousand dollars, which I believe that you, somewhere in your account, will spend that, but is there, is that going to be, or should that be reoccurring, that as the, you know, as the older models puts out, that you get those replaced, and so on, and so on? So, it would be kind of a revolving account, where if we put money in, you can replace as we go? I mean, is ideally, is that how you would like it to work or do you like to wait until June?
Yeah, I, I, unfortunately, because of the nature of IT and never knowing what happens, I have to hold off. I mean, I, I did, I did buy those, uh, those computer replacements, um, in January, I believe, or February, because I could see, I could project out that we were gonna be okay. I still have enough money for emergencies, but I, 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 under the circumstances, I, I, I feel very comfortable staying, waiting till the end of the year to make these replacements. I just think it's a smart way of running a department in IT, so if, if an emergency happened, I wouldn't over, go over my budget and have to come back and ask you for more money. So the, the only time you guys typically see me in front of you is when there's a capital investment, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bonilla, I, just one request that I'd ask of you, I guess for next year because there are questions and it seems like the, the way the, the, the line items are broken out, um, for your subtotals doesn't necessarily seem to work for you. And I know the budget ideally should, should work for you in some of the classifications as long as they make sense from an accounting standpoint. I guess to make it easier, not only for you to present this next year, uh, but for it to look a little bit more transparent and how the funds are being used and where the expenses are coming from, could, could I respectfully ask that you work with?
Absolutely.
The city auditor for next year, so it, it looks a little bit more cleaned up and, and, uh, it's a little bit, hopefully easier, uh, and a little bit more manageable for you as well?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Counselor Ginatelli.
I just one more question on the contracted services.
It went up subst- substantially. Is that, is that because of the new website?
No, no, that's not. That's a small portion of it. Um, uh, we have added several software platforms, the most recent one being the Detail Tracker for the police department. We were running on a beta site, as a beta site, for about four months and the chief had indicated to me that he can't live without it now. It's saving him tons of man hour.
Yep.
So that's a $10,000 cost right there in itself.
That, that's for like maintenance?
That is for, um, tracking detail and managing, um, as people come in now, they just call into the fire, the police department for their details, actual details on the street.
Mm-huh.
And, uh, it'll put them in queue by how much time they've already had. Everything's all set. There's no arguments. There's no, uh, management from the OIC anymore. It's all software.
So that, that contracted service line is really covering all the city's licenses?
Every, that's exactly.
The companies that we have the software from for their maintenance support if there's an issue? And the copiers and the printers, that's all?
The copiers separate.
That's separate, okay.
This is just fixed cost for software.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Information Technology Services? Thank you, Mr. Bonilla.
Have a great night.
We'll move to purchasing on page 15. The mayor and Mr. Sarason will be able to address, um, this section, beginning with personal services for a subtotal of 202,480 dollars. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to purchasing expense for a total of 10,600. Questions from counselors? Counselor Ginatelli.
Uh, just quickly, um, in the in the prestigious audit we had last year, um, I say that sarcastically 'cause to me it was useless. Uh, it mentioned the need for better technologies in purchasing, procurement. Is, maybe this is through you, Mr. President, because it's an expense-related question. Is it the administration's intent that we look into better software usage in that area for procurement needs? I, I'm to understand that there's, there's software out there for procurement offices that some cities and towns utilize and others don't. I just wanted to know if that would help streamline things in there on top of changes that have already been made? If, if that's a point of consideration for the future?
I, I think the, um, the major, uh, investment has been made in, in the, uh, you'll see in fiscal year 16, the 40,000. That was, uh, integrating the, uh, Munis, um, system to the procurement. And as Trevor pointed out, that, that has been purchased and there has been some training and the plan is to implement, uh, the beginning of next fiscal year. And I think, uh, there's, there's an individual coming on that has experience, uh, in, in, with Munis also. So that'll help facilitate that, that change.
And I'm assuming that software, those recurring costs are in his, his area?
Uh, yeah, they may be, and there is some training here. Uh, and I think, um, this budget is fairly vanilla, uh, knowing that once the, the new person comes on, they can settle in and, and, um, help direct where they best use the, uh, the funds.
And, and, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I, I missed one question on personal services. The school department credit of 62, 640. What jumped out to me on that that I wasn't crazy about is in FY15 and FY16, the schools paid 100% for this person.
Right.
Why are they not paying 100% for him now?
You may recall last year, there was a point made and, and well-taken on the administrative side that, um, that person wasn't in fact spending 100% of their time on school business. So this accommodated, uh, that concern and, uh, the schools, you know, it, it was a good, a goodwill gesture with the schools.
So that represents, uh, about three-quarters of his time with the schools and the other quarter time assisting with city matters.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm glad to see that it's more in line now with
Right.
the work he's actually doing. Thank you.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we on the, um, expense?
Item. We are on expense, correct.
Um, I have a question on the contracted services.
Yep.
Um, in 2013, we use 480. 2014, we expend zero. 2015, we expend zero. Uh, we appropriate $2,000 for 2016, we're projected to expense zero.
Right.
Now we're appropriating again $2,000.
Right. Yep. Yeah, that line item and advertising are, are really, um, they're, they're subject to a, where you may need, have a need, where there may be, uh, you advertise for a project and, and, it may not belong to a particular department, so.
Mr. Sarason, I think, uh, still sort of prosodyric.
Okay, but, 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 he's on, he's on topic.
Um, it, it may be advertised to us, um, you know, you're buying, uh, paper for the whole city. And, and this way, sometimes this department would, um, absorb that cost of the paper. Uh, the other, the 2,000 though, getting back to that question, um, an example would be, um, again, where we had a bid that went out for the whole city and it may involve, uh, research for insurance. We have a, we have hired a consultant at times where, uh, they'll review the insurance package for like the, uh, sewer project or what have you. If it didn't belong to a particular department, then this, this would be used for that purpose. So it, it's, it's an, it's just available i- if it's needed. If it's not needed, then it would go back to the general fund.
Just to follow up on that, to answer, Mr. President.
Mr. Senator.
Uh, having some specialized expertise in preparing some of the more, uh, particular procurement documents is helpful. Some occasion can come up. Uh, the one that I was most recently involved in was in the airport. We just needed to get an architect to go out and prepare some, uh, bid documents so that we could, uh, move forward as quickly as possible to, um, repair a roof. And in that particular case, the funds came from the airport fund because, uh, because we sent that request in for the, to the auditor's office. In some cases, we could find ourselves in a situation where we just need to be able to hire that additional contract services so we can get the procurement job accomplished as quickly as possible. And, uh, it would be very useful to have that money available so that we can get that technical support that we need to, to, to accomplish the purchasing that you'll need.
Just curious because that, that technical support, we haven't been, we haven't relied on that in the last four or five years.
Right.
It, it's just available, as, um, Vinnie pointed out, and, and, um, there may be a situation where maybe the funding isn't available and we wanna look into a possible, uh, project that wouldn't be attributed to a department. So this would make, this would, uh, make available those funds for that, for that purpose.
And also travel and, and, travel and meeting in the last four years, five years, including our fiscal 2006, 16.
Yep.
Doesn't look like we, we use a lot, but we're still putting money into that account, um.
Right. The, uh, there, there, just so you know, the, the, on the expenses, the, there wasn't much dialogue with the department on the projections for this year. And for next year, we're kinda leaving it open to, to see what, what the new person, uh, you know, opts to do. I know that the new person is a, I think they're the president of the.
That's correct.
Mass Purchasing Association, so I'm, I'm sure they'll be using, going, more actively going to, to meetings.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions for purchasing expense? Seeing none, that will conclude our budget hearings for this evening. I'd like to thank all those department heads and commissioners that were in attendance this evening for their time granting us their evening. We'll resume tomorrow night, Thursday, uh, May 26th at 6:00 p.m.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.